Sitting in for Katie Brown and calling the March 19, 2024 meeting, regular meeting of Cherry Hills Village City Council to order. Let's, uh, roll call.
Counselor Eber?
Here.
Counselor Holland?
Here.
Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Sheldon's absent. Counselor Blum?
Here.
Counselor McGuire?
Here.
I didn't bang the gavel, so welcome back. Pledge of allegiance, like, pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Audience participation. Uh, we have Russell Stewart. Hi, Russell. How are you?
Good evening.
You know the rules, three.
It's good to be back in this room again. Good to see everybody. Happy, I think, happy, um, spring day, 11 o'clock tonight.
Oh, that's right.
Happy equinox to everybody. Um, I wanted to say a few things. Um, first of all, let me start off. I said into police academy. I, I want, this is gonna be great. I signed up and, uh, hope to go through that and thank you for offering that to the community. I think that's a great service and I hope I can survive that, uh, ordeal. Um, I wanted to say a few words about Quincy Farm because I think you've probably been getting emails. I don't know if you, you know, by residents, I've been getting some of my job is to kinda tell you what I've been hearing from, from people and raise the issue and, and let you know. I thought that communication is always better about what's going on. So I wanted to, um, um, and it kinda got highlighted by the activity that's gone on out there. But I'm starting with the, um, you know, the easement itself and, um, and, and the language of the easement, which is the west area that we're talking about here. Uh, you know, Shelby managed primarily as a natural area, uh, with limited public access. So I, I remember I was up there in 2018 when we debated this for hours. And I know Quincy Farm Committee did the same thing about what was limited access. We finally came down to a, um, you know, went to Car Open Lands and Car Open Lands, I thought had, had, um, well, they issued a letter that said, um, uh, we do not believe that the type and extent of the public access in your proposal sunrise to sunset seven days a week is consistent with the conservation easement. Um, and then, you know, that, um, you know, it kinda set still for a while, but then we had the Quincy Farm annual plan, obviously, of 2024, right? It was decided last week, which, which seems to be kind of in conflict with what the easement said. This again says on page five, it's gonna be open in 2024, dawn to dusk, um, um, 365 days a week, a year. Um, so that's, that's the first question people are asking about why is, that's, that's a pretty good 180-degree turn from where I thought we were back in Car Open Lands was. Um, not sure if Car Open Lands, I haven't heard if Car Open Lands has changed its position or what's going on with that, but that, that was a new position. That's kind of got a lot of people alarmed about what's going on. Um, and there hasn't been a lot of communication. Maybe I missed it. Hasn't been a lot of communication about, about that change. Um, same thing with the, the language in page five about, um, the purpose of this is to provide outdoor recreation for the general public. That's new to me. I mean, I, I was here when we negotiated with Kathy Anderson, the whole easement. I saw it for the first time. We never talked about having recreational use on the west side. That, those words, the first time I've ever seen that applied to, to the west side. I don't know if that was intentional or that was just inadvertent, but if it's true, I, we'd have to know, we'd like to know what those recreation uses are going to be. Is that lacrosse? Is that soccer? Is that the whole thing? Um, that's the questions that people are asking about why those words are in there and whether they were a mistake or whether they're intentional and, and meaning something. And, and finally, the, the last, which has people obviously upset about the, um, activity that's going out with the trail and the trail improvement and the crusher find, um, which is, it is a permanent impermeable thing, kinda like pavement or concrete. Um, I think, you know, in, in my view, that's not natural. I mean, when the easement says a natural area, that to me is not natural. And I think that's what others are saying, that doesn't appear to be natural to them. So we're not understanding the, the rationale behind the need for the crusher find or the impermeable. It also seems inconsistent with agricultural uses. I don't, you know, goats can't eat it. I mean, what? It seems to be taking a direction, down a direction of, of use of that prop, of that trail for hiking, which apparently, apparently it looks like it's just kind of a glorified hiking trail. And we've got a lot of hiking trails already in the city, but, you know, I think the, the view when I was on Quincy Farm Committee was a lot of this would be a natural area, be truly agriculture, would be a, it would be a place where, um, um, you know, you had a pasture and paddock, harking back to the 1930s, a, a farm in the 1930s that was, how, how it was incorporated. And that's kinda, kinda what our vision was, at least at the time I was on that. That, 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 these would be pastures with goats or animals or something like that. And I think that's what Kat, you know, anticipated. There's a problem, of course, because the, the house is there as well. But anyway, wanted to just raise these issues. I, I do think that they're kind of the tail wagging the dog, though, the bigger issue here, which is, um, maintenance and deferred maintenance for this, for this property. I mean, I think we have, you know, 2021 Jay produced a plan, $6 million to fix the property. I think we ought to take, I think the council should take it up systematically, sit down and, and fix it. Um, you have a windfall from 90-met lane. You have money. You may have windfall from the taxes, but I think you can find money. I think we have money to, to do this. This should be the crown jewel of the community. It is the crown jewel of Cherry Hills Village. Let's treat it that way and spend the money. Um, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Russell.
Thank you for everybody and thank you for all the work you do.
Appreciate, appreciate the feedback. Uh, okay. Is there anybody else that wants to make any comments that didn't sign up? Okay. Uh, no problem. We're moving on to the consent agenda, um, but before we, we have a motion there, uh, we'd like to remove item F. Discussions with the, with the supplier since we, uh, received the packets had produced a lot of red lines and so we're not quite ready for consideration on, on item F. So this would be a motion to approve, um.
Uh.
Yep.
Uh, I'd like to also remove, uh, A. I wasn't here last week, so.
Fair enough.
I'd like to be able to.
Yep.
I move approval for consent agenda items B through E.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Moving, uh, to the minutes, item A.
I move to approve the minutes of the March 5th meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Okay. We are now moving to.
Six F.
Six F. Uh, well, no, six F, we're just gonna table that because.
Oh, you tabled it, okay.
Yeah, they're not.
Withdrawed from the agenda.
Too many, too many red lines and not ready for consideration.
Okay, good.
Um, okay, unfinished business. Council Bill, uh, one, series 124, amending section 165120 of municipal, municipal code, and that would be Mr. Workman.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Uh, I will try and keep this as short as I can for you this evening. Um, the bill before you this evening is a simple amendment to update our flood insurance rate maps, known as FRS, um, so that they, uh, will become effective on February 11th, which is consistent with FEMA requirements. There we go. Um, uh, proof is in the pudding for you. These are the exact text amendments that would be made, uh, to the ordinance. Again, um, identifying that our current maps that we currently operate on would be, um, applicable and, and consistent through April 10th and then beginning, um, April 11th, uh, the new FRS maps would become effective. As a reminder for council or for those that may be watching, um, there were no changes to any floodplain boundaries or any base flood elevations as part of this map update. It's simply Cherry Hills Village is named on maps that were changed in Arapahoe County and FEMA requires us to adopt those maps, um, as, as our adopted maps.
Questions?
You beat me to the punch, Mayor Pro Tem. Well, that, that does conclude my presentation, but I have any, uh, if you have any questions, I'm available and the recommended motion, um, is on the screen in front of you.
I move to approve Council Bill one, series 2024, amending section 16-5-120 of the municipal code to adopt the federal emergency management agency's revised flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps for Arapahoe County and its incorporated areas on second and final reading.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Aye.
Counselor Wheel?
Aye.
Counselor Blum?
Aye.
Counselor McGuire?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Um, new business. We have an art donation agreement. Uh, Emily?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Uh, so last summer, the Cherry Hills Art, Village Art Commission, sorry, Cherry Hills Village Art Commission co-chair, Pamela Hall, received an email from Yoshitomo Saito, who is an artist who had previously participated in our art, uh, on loan program with the city. So he reached out to her with the offer to donate a different sculpture, um, than the piece that we had on loan. Uh, that piece is shown on the screen. It's Bamboo Girl, uh, and it is a bronze piece. So the art commission, uh, conducted a site visit to see the sculpture in person and after several meetings, decided on a location, which is the corner of Quincy and Clarkson, um, where the Orkart is located now. And, uh, voted at their January meeting to recommend to city council that you accept the donation of this piece. So this image is a representation of what that placement will look like. Um, and if accepted by city council, park staff will pick up the sculpture following the end of its current loan period, um, in April.
So is that where the mine car is?
Yes, so we'll move that to a different location. Um, we haven't chosen a specific one yet, but that's not actually part of the art collection. It's just, um, a sort of a, yeah, a decorative piece that was donated and about 20 years ago.
Just for the record, I actually kinda like that piece. I've always liked that work art, so hopefully it doesn't just go off into someplace that nobody really can see it, at least from my perspective.
Yeah, we'll probably find another location, um, in a right-of-way, in a, in a bed or something similar to its current spot.
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's got that charm, you know, uh, to it.
Um, so the art commission is looking forward to adding this, uh, new piece to their permanent collection. Co-chair Dave Schmidt is here, uh, if you have any specific questions for the commission and otherwise I'm happy to answer questions as well.
Um, question that I had is, is that we are gonna get Bamboo Girl, um, if approved, but I saw that there was boy and girl. Does that mean we're only gonna get half?
Um, they are not, we did ask the question, um, of the artist. The commission reached out about getting both pieces. Um, he does not think that they need to stay together. Um, and the offer is just for Bamboo Girl at this time.
Okay. And, and again, I, I probably saw it, but I couldn't remember the height of the piece.
Uh, it's 80 inches.
80 inches. Okay.
Okay. Any further questions? Have a motion?
I move to approve the art donation agreement for Bamboo Girl by Yoshimo, Yoshitomo Saito.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, uh, motion carries unanimously.
This was a good work on behalf of the art commission.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I mean, a $68,000 value statue, uh, sculpture, you know, as a donation is quite an add to the collection.
Absolutely. Good work.
He's a very, very well-known sculptor, and they're all one of a kind. He does it all by hand.
Nice.
Terrific.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, next agenda item is John Mead Park regrading contract. Jay?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Um, staff has previously presented, uh, this project to city council just to make sure everybody is up to speed as to why we are doing this. Again, we, um, we need to create more wetlands. The project originally, uh, didn't take as much wetland as we wanted it to and actually needed it to through our permit. So we have about point one seven, one six acres that we need to lower a little bit. Um, and this project will help us meet that as well as there was some miscalculations in our no rise, so that will fix that problem too and we can get our letter of no rise fixed. Um, and additionally, there is a culvert that drains the property to the south. It was set at the correct elevation, but because of the new trail and the higher elevation of the trail, it's holding more water, so we've been working closely with that neighbor to correct that. Um, so as part of this project, that will be lowered. So then, uh, the property south of the trail there will drain as it did historically. Um, and then, um, we'll do reseeding and planting of the wetlands plugs. Um, we, if, if all goes well, we'll be able to do that this spring. If, if it doesn't, we'll have to wait until fall, but we've got the plugs ordered, so we, we're, we're raring to go.
Cool. Um, questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, you know, you originally budgeted it at 50,000 and you were able to come close with L and M, but the other ones were like three times over. And so my only question, my only question was evidently those costs are like way up. Are these gonna have an impact on other projects and then particularly the Quincy Farms pond dredging thing? I mean, are we thinking that we're gonna be way off or?
We unfortunately are going to see a lot of these costs. The, uh, pound dredging, uh, estimates came back this week. Um, minus all of the ecological stuff, it's just over 300,000 as the estimate instead of the 100,000 that we budgeted. But we, we haven't bid it yet. We haven't seen actual numbers. Um, but yeah, we have a lot of projects that have, uh, since we did budget, have really grown on us on the costs.
Okay. Any other questions?
I move to approve the construction contract with L and M Enterprises, Inc. in the amount of $65,450 with a 5% contingency of $3,272 for a total maximum expenditure of $68,722. I further move to authorize the city attorney to make such changes as may be needed, to correct any non-material errors or language, or to negotiate such changes to the agreement as may be appropriate, and do not substantially increase the obligations of the city, and to authorize the mayor to sign such agreement when in final form.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, pass unanimously. Holiday time off.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of city council. Before you tonight for your consideration is the topic of adding holiday time to our employee city benefits. Just a quick background, the compensation study consultant identified that the city lagged behind in holiday time. That was recognized from other municipalities. When city manager Thorson asked me to look further into the matter, it appeared from that information that we gathered, the city may be behind by two holidays. Um, because the consultant didn't, it doesn't appear she took into consideration some of the flex or floater holidays that other municipalities offer. This topic came before city council at the retreat and some of the comments were that, um, city council was for bringing the city up to market with other municipalities as well as, um, one thought was that city council didn't wanna direct staff which holidays they should or should not recognize. So I'm.
Questions for Catherine?
Yeah, just one. Um, our, our holidays and with these floaters, these are holidays that employees have to take during the year. I mean, they, they.
Yes, it would not carry over. It would be a use it or lose it and it would be, if it was a flex floater holiday that you were considering, it would go into a holiday time bank. That would be separate from other time banks, so.
My question was at, at the retreat, uh, we thought by adding one holiday would bring us up to where everybody is and you're saying now it should be two holidays? Is that, is that what I heard?
We had talked about that two seemed to be.
You'd go two, okay, alright. Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to add two floating holidays for the city staff effective Monday, March 25th, 2024, to be processed for employees in the current payroll cycle.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, passes unanimously and thank you, Catherine, for good work on this. Okay, that brings us to reports. Um, I don't have a whole lot of, Dr. Cog, we had, uh, conversations about, we haven't had, the board meeting is tomorrow night, but, uh, the RTC, they, uh, did some preliminary work on, uh, housing shortage identification. The Dr. Cog folks are moving through kind of a methodical study to try and understand what the needs are and how the needs fit with transportation so that we get a more holistic view of land use and, and what's gonna be effective and what will not be so, be as effective. Um, and, and so today we had a presentation that talked about the, uh, the shortages of now and out into 2050. No big surprises there. Um, you know, 60,000 or so, 60 to 100 short now and, uh, gets up to about 200,000 as you go out into the future. The, um, shortages really are very concentrated in the lower socioeconomic groups. So it's, it's not like it's an across-the-board problem. It's, it's really, um, 30, 60% average median income, uh, average median income, uh, levels that, uh, that are the shortest. Different topic, uh, I, I think all of you are aware that St. Mary's bought a piece of property behind, uh, the school, to the west of the school. And I did receive some correspondence there, um, where neighbors in what's a residential area are a little concerned about the plans that St. Mary's has. Um, they've publicly announced that their intention is to put in a, uh, early learning center there and, um, the neighbors are concerned about noise, about, uh, you know, disruption of the aesthetic of the place and, and traffic that'll be, uh, coming in there because in addition to the early learning center, I think there's some talk about, uh, rerouting some of the drop-off traffic as well. So, um, I, you know, we, we don't have any, any requests for any changes or, you know, any, any permit requests, um, at this time, but just wanted to make council aware of that. Um, Rob?
Um, following our last meeting, I attended the airport noise roundtable meeting at Centennial and they were, well, shocked to see us there, um, after a long absence and were very welcoming to us. Um, and then they proceeded to talk about noise issues that in the last year Cherry Hills residents have filed one noise complaint with the authority. And so none of the plans that they're in the midst of trying to change, um, would affect anything in Cherry Hills Village. Um, it's mostly to affect the area north and east of Centennial's airport.
It's mostly to affect the area north and east of Centennial's airport. Apart from the noise issues, they think a large part of these noise issues come from a flight school that is practicing touch-and-go landings at the airport and causing repeated low-elevation flight traffic to be badly affecting a lot of the areas close to the airport, and not necessarily as you get up and out and further away from the airport. The second piece that goes with this roundtable study that's going on is that apparently an awful lot of airplane fuel is still leaded fuel, and as these flights are going and basically just doing loops around and around and around, they have had some sampling done and have found elevated lead levels in a couple areas within the community and within those flight paths. And it parallels a little bit, there's a bill before the state legislature, I don't know its number right now, but also looking at some of those issues, but they're working to try and see if they can get some economic incentives to try and speed up the conversion, I guess, to, a lot of planes can convert their engines to unleaded fuels. With that said, I'll continue to attend the next couple, you know, as long as we continue not to be charged for anything. It's kind of a no-brainer, and if things don't appear to kind of ramp up for things that are of interest to us, I'll report back that I don't know if our continued presence is worthwhile. So. That's it.
No report, but I just want to compliment staff, particularly public service and parks, clearing out the snow and the branches and stuff and the damage all over the city was great getting that out as fast. I also had a chance for the first time to look at the update map for the plowing and watching that update, because I didn't have anything else to do. I was just sitting at my desk, and I look at it, and sure enough, it was working every 15 minutes or so, another street was plowed. So anyway, good work with all of that and cleaning up all of the trees and damage and stuff. Particularly, I mean, I couldn't believe all of those pine trees down there at Quincy and Happy Canyon. That was amazing, so. Anyway, nice work, so.
I have no report, but I do like to, I would like to say, because I talked to Katie about this, this retreat we just had was probably at my seventh, and by far and away is the most productive, and I mentioned that to Katie, and I think that's a reflection on the staff that it really was something that we accomplished, because I've sat in many retreats where nothing's happened. So I just want to compliment staff on that, and I expressed that to Katie when I talked to her. So other than that, no report.
I don't have any report. I also wanted to express my thanks to the staff for the retreat. I thought it was really well-done and lots of good information. I know it's a lot of work putting those all-day events together, so I really do appreciate all the hard work. I continually tell people, this is probably one of the easiest city councils to sit on because of the quality of the staff that we have. I personally make a point of telling a lot of people about that, because I do think you guys deserve a lot of credit for what you do, so thank you.
Okay, Jim?
Just one quick note. Upcoming April 2nd, right now, we have a light agenda, in fact, no agenda, so I will be talking to the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem over the next week on whether we actually have any items, and maybe we might cancel that meeting, just put you on notice.
Jim, for information, I will be out of town for that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, any department heads? Well, excellent.
Yeah, we've, we're going to have one quick. Emily's going to give a quick update, but I will let staff know your compliments. I thought the storm went very well. I was unable to be here with three and a half feet of snow at my house, but like Earl, I thought the new plow program was great. I think it really helps let people know where the plows have been, if you watch long enough, where they're going. And it really helps us on the other end. If I get calls that say, "Your plows were doing 50 through the neighborhood," we can verify that that's true or not. Eventually, we'll have cameras, front-facing cameras on all of the plows just for liability reasons, and when something does get hit, if we did it, then we can say, "Yes, we did it," and if we didn't, we have proof that it wasn't us as we went by. So we're going to continue to update that program and make it worthwhile for the residents. And just one other note, branch drop-off is open through this weekend still. Public Works and Park staff are out doing the public property and the mains, but in the neighborhoods, any residents that want to drop off branches, the parking lot at John Mead is open through the weekend.
I will be down in the next day or two.
Yeah, it's already half-full.
And I guess if that's, if nobody else is talking, I do just want to say that there could be, you know, some acrimony here in the city, because the city manager's Colorado State Rams are getting ready to play my University of Virginia Cavaliers in basketball and the playing game for the NCAAs, so who knows what will happen?
Emily, it looked like you had something.
Yes, just a quick update for anyone watching at home. If folks are interested in following along with Quincy Farm projects, there are updates posted on the Quincy Farm News page of the website, and council has committed over a million dollars in our budget this year for Quincy Farm maintenance and improvement projects, so thank you all for that.
Just a couple of quick housing in the legislature updates. The Transit-Oriented Community Bill is scheduled to be heard in the Finance Committee on the 25th at 1:30. There's no, the ADU bill is in the Appropriations Committee, but there's no schedule for hearing that yet. The parking minimum is also in appropriations with no scheduled reading. And then the Public Meetings Bill is scheduled for discussion tomorrow at 1:30 at the Capitol, so I will continue to monitor those and update as more information becomes available. I will share with council that we had our weekly meeting with our lobbyist, Nexus Policy Group, and their thoughts right now are, the legislature is still in full force and moving forward, but right now, discussions are heavy around the budget, and some of these land use bills may be impacted by the budget discussions that go on. And so here, the next, you know, week, 10 days, some of that should become more clear in terms of what some of these budget impacts will be. So again, we'll continue to monitor that and keep councils updated as we can.
And Paul, I assume that when you need our support for something, or you want us to take any steps, that you'll reach out to us and let us know?
Correct, yeah. We will make sure we communicate that with council if and when formal action like a resolution in opposition to something may be warranted.
Just a few quick updates. As you know, after our last council member meeting, rather, we moved forward with the acquisition of our K9. That dog and its handler are in their second week of training so far and performing really well, so we're going to hope for continued success. Based on that schedule, they should be on the street, back to full duty around Memorial Day. Our Citizens Academy is our inaugural class. Citizens Academy starts April 11th. 20 of the 24 seats have been filled, so if you have anybody that you might know that's interested, Early Bird Gets the Worm, that will be full in the next week or two. And then lastly, six months ago, we launched our Crime Watch platform, and as you know, we've done a pretty decent job of advertising that. It's been a concerted effort, and this week, we reached our goal, and we're now just north of 1,000 unique subscribers to that website. We're reaching about 12,000 people nationally, based on the analytics and shares and those kinds of things, but 1,000 unique subscribers, the lion's share of which are residents here at Cherry Hills Village, that's a good thing. We're getting our messaging across to the best of our ability, so thank you.
Chief Lance, I did want to compliment you on the, you know, sometimes I get myself a little excited when the numbers are, you know, moving up a little bit, but the crime statistics look pretty good for this past month in your month-end report, so that's to your credit, and I think things may be, it's only one month, it's not a trend on the one hand, on the other hand, you know, maybe it's starting to work.
I appreciate you saying that. Just on that statistical data sheet that you're seeing, there is one statistic that is significantly increased, and we're actually quite proud of that, and that's our vehicle looting. It's up 900%. And what that means is that we're chasing a lot of bad guys out of the city. We just installed five new flock cameras, as approved in our 24 budget, and those went in last week. In the 72-hour period over the weekend, we had four occupied stolen vehicles move through our city, and we were able to flush out all of those. So they, it's all the things we've known, right? They do come through, but we're being made aware of their presence and doing our best to displace them someplace other than our city. Thank you.
Chief, if I may, and for everybody else, I did get a phone call from one of the residents where one of the new flock cameras are, has been installed, and the question came up a little bit about what involvement council has with where those are installed and things like that. And the suggestion was made that there be a semi-notification or a discussion with the affected landowners or landowner that is closest to those areas as a way to see if they, you know, kind of to understand what's going on. I know it kind of adds some extra things, and I'm just mentioning the comment. I'm not saying I validate and I endorse the comment that was made, but it's just wanted everybody to know that I did receive a comment from one of the residents where a flock was installed, and they weren't real happy that it appears to be right in front of their house, even though it's not right in front of their house.
Was their issue aesthetic, or, I mean, because they're in the right-of-way, right? So it's not on private property?
It was formally from, only, and only from the aesthetic.
Yeah, I guess my view would be is at the end of the day, public safety, and I'm presuming that the police department puts them in the location they view the best in terms of efficacy, and to me, that would trump anything from an aesthetic perspective, so.
Yeah, we do a pretty thorough job of kind of most bang for the buck in terms of location. The one that Council Member Eber is referring to is the only one that is sort of, what could appear to be on somebody's property, it's not, it's in the public right-of-way, and it's been permitted as such. I certainly understand the concern around that particular camera. Unfortunately, it's at an intersection where there was no other public easement other than in a raised median in the middle of the roadway, which was determined not to be an option, just in terms of snow plows and those kinds of things. But the one camera is, it's not the prettiest, but it's also behind what was already an existing speed limit sign, so it's not like it's an all-of-a-sudden issue, right? So, but we're continuing to evaluate that, and I think that camera's going to stay working.
And I got a phone call back from Commander within, I don't know, 20 minutes of when I had first called chief, so it was great. He was very upfront about kind of the process that everybody goes through, but since there seemed to be new, and we hadn't really talked about how the placement actually goes, it was a good education for me, so just wanted to let people know.
And my apologies to Emily, Paul, and the chief. My basketball comment was to be the end. I thought we were done, because everybody was like sitting around, so my apologies.
One other, one other thought crossed my, no, one other thought crossed my mind, 553 pages. Laura and Dan, thank you for pushing the digital version of this. It would have been a ream of paper for each of us, so, you know, we're doing good things. Any other business before the council? If, okay, we're adjourned. We stand adjourned at 7:06, oh, no, 7:07.